All right, good evening. I have to call to order the King George County School Board's special meeting and public hearing on qualifications for superintendent. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. May be seated. All right, so at this time, we will open the floor for public comment on qualifications for superintendent if we have any. Don't see any here with us this evening, Mr. Vance, that we have many online? Negative, all right, well, we'll just cut right to the chase. All right, so our discussion item this evening is to establish our qualifications for superintendent. I know we've all never done this before. So my recommendation, we all have the results of the survey, which look to have received pretty good feedback from the community. So I would recommend we look at the compiled file, which is the one that's the data KG all, and then use that data to come up with what we expect, what we would like to see in our announcement as far as qualifications are concerned. So I would recommend maybe we talk about what we would like our format to look like, and then discuss what qualifications we would like to include in our advertisement. And then my intent was to compile those and then provide those to VSB, which is my understanding of the process. And then I assume if there are anything that we want to massage with regards to the actual format or anything, I assume we can do it after we provide that to VSB. So, any general comments or feedback? Use your mic, can you use your mic? Did you, so it was emailed to us? From Mr. Brewster? No, Tom Brewster sent them? Sent them yesterday evening? And they're all PDFs. Did you find them, Mr. Bush? Does everyone else have a copy of the survey results in front of them? All right, so Mr. Bush, while you are searching for those, how about we discuss the format? So if everyone, if you have a copy of the package that was provided to us by VSB at our last meeting, starting on page thirty-one, I think, are a number of recent superintendent announcements that they have put out. So a number of them follow a similar format, and then a couple of them are a little bit different. But so if you look at page thirty-three, which is the announcement for Newport News Public Schools, page thirty-eight for Manassas City, and page forty-one, which is Suffolk Public Schools, the three of those appear to all have used the same format, which I think maps very well to the survey and would be the most efficient way to tackle putting this together. The beginnings of the announcements are demographics and school division information, which have already been provided to VSB, courtesy of Ms. Bushrod. So they have that. So in each of them, there's a section that begins desired qualifications, where they list a couple of top bulleted qualifications, and then categorize requirements. The three that I referenced, I would recommend we follow that approach unless there are objections.
I think that'd be the most efficient way to do it as well.
Okay. Anyone else? Sound good? Okay, all right, so if we want to just pick one, they're pretty much, like I said, all the same. So if you started just the one on page thirty-three, so they've broken it out, desired qualifications, so experience, specific experience in positions. So if we'd like to start with that, if you look at the, I know there were eleven PDFs in the email, broken out by categories of survey participants. But so the all, the one, the KG all that they referenced in their email, that one has the combined data. So it includes the data and the feedback from all of the stakeholders. So if you scroll to page six in the survey, so past the tables, is the table that has the required or preferred or not important rankings for each of the experience categories, such as experience as a superintendent or an assistant superintendent, earned doctorate, so on and so forth. So if we were looking at these, I went through and highlighted them. I think we should just perhaps walk through how we feel about each one of them, and if we want to list it as the results in the survey indicate. So for example, for the first one, an earned doctorate, the majority of the survey participants indicated that an earned doctorate should be a requirement.
Madam Chair.
Certainly, Ms. Rolls.
You're looking at the all, I'm seeing, that's not what I see for that.
What do you see?
I see forty-four point seven seven percent say required, and then basically forty percent say preferred.
Correct.
Fourteen percent say not important, so the majority would say it's either preferred or not important.
You mean required or not, required or preferred?
So the three categories, there's required, preferred, and not important.
Correct.
So the largest, any of the three was required with about forty-five percent.
Yep.
But then if you combine the preferred and not important together, that's fifty-five percent. So the majority would say it's either, it's not required essentially.
Okay, I'm sorry, well, the required category got the highest ranking. You could also say the majority think it should be required or preferred.
But we, okay, we have to put one. So our approach here is effectively, we're going to do, we'd like to do a survey as a board, and kind of here's sort of the board survey that we're going to translate into qualifications, right?
What about the board survey? What?
I mean, we're essentially going to sit here and go through the survey as a board, and we're going to essentially fill it out as a board, what we would put for the answer.
So I assume that you did, did you complete?
I'm saying right now, all of us going through it.
Evaluate, yes.
On the qualification, we need to say required, preferred, or just not even mention it for each of these.
Okay, I think it would be appropriate for us to opine on it based on the feedback in the survey. So if I were looking at it, and I see that forty-four percent said that a doctorate should be required, forty percent says it should be preferred, and only fourteen percent say it's not important, that tells me the community thinks that it is important that they either have a doctorate, or that it should either be required or preferred that they have a doctorate. I myself could go either way, but I think it should be one of those two categories based on feedback in the survey.
Madam Chair, traditionally, what you see in these job announcements is an earned doctorate and education is preferred. So you're going to be okay either way, so if you put preferred, then we have some leeway with that.
I would agree.
So I think I would put an earned doctorate is preferred. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I agree. I think that, I'm sorry, yes, I do have it now.
Okay.
I think preferred, in fact, if anything, I probably think in the survey I put is not required. But preferred, I think, is fine, because you've got a whole lot of people who are highly qualified, who may step into the position and may even be working on their doctorate.
Agreed. I believe Dr. Benson fell into that category. Yep, I agree.
And I think that to put required, I think we'd be eliminating some very good candidates.
I don't disagree. Ms. Hawk?
I agree.
Okay.
Or Madam Chair, you may have someone who's working on a doctorate.
Yeah.
That would be the preferred. Right, thank you. Okay, so preferred. Yes, okay.
Yes.
All right, so next up, we have experience as a superintendent. I myself would lump that one with the superintendent or the associate superintendent. Both of those, the highest percentage went in the preferred column. I see that's also a similar requirement in other ones. So we can lump more together. We could also add experience as a central office administrator, since the highest percentage of that one was also preferred. The experiences, all three of those are preferred. Thoughts?
That works.
I concur, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I guess preferred, I mean, it's funny, if it was individually, anyway, someone with administrative experience, I think, is absolutely necessary. However, as an associate or whatever, I'm not so sure, but definitely as an administrator.
So as an, so, well, so what do we, I guess, define administrator? So this says central office administrator, that wouldn't necessarily in this case.
That doesn't mean a principal.
What?
That would not necessarily mean a principal.
Right, right, okay.
And I think, and I look at a lot of situations, a high school principal who's maybe even has a superintendent certificate, who's been doing excellent work, I don't know, I'd just hate to eliminate people like that who may be highly qualified, just they haven't been in central office yet. However, being in central office has a great advantage, because there's a whole lot of things that go on at the division or the superintendent level, or in the central office level, that high school or middle school principals would not be aware of.
So would you be okay making that preferred?
Yeah, although in these qualifications, if we get somebody who, we can say preferred, but let's just say we go with all three, and he's got a couple of areas, or she has a couple of areas, that maybe in this particular one, high school principal, no central off. Everything else looks great. I just want an understanding that, obviously, this doesn't necessarily mean it's just cut in stone.
I think so, I think we would want, I think I agree, if I understand your question, I think where we need to be careful is saying required.
Yeah, I understand.
Right, so that would be, so that's why I would be hesitant to say that experience as a central office administrator is required, because that may
I prefer.
preclude a number.
Okay, I give in, preferred.
Ms. Hawk?
I actually initially felt required. I think the survey.
Mic on.
On the other way.
Can't get it right. There I am. I really think it's very helpful to have, which puts it in the preferred category. So if that's the general consensus, that's fine.
Okay, so I have it written as experience as a superintendent, assistant superintendent, or central office administrator is preferred.
Okay.
Good, okay. Right, next is experience as a principal. There was a high percentage of survey respondents who indicated that should be required. Sixty-three percent thought that should be required. Thoughts?
Chair. I would agree with the respondents, that I have a hard time seeing how someone would perform well as superintendent without first being a principal.
Without being a principal?
I would like to make that required.
Madam Chair, I concur.
Okay. Ms. Hawk? Required. Bush?
Yeah, I'd say required.
I agree. Experience as a CEO other than school district. Most folks did not feel that was important, nor do I.
Absolutely not.
Okay, I need to something. All right, so now we have teaching at high school, middle or elementary school levels, and all three of those categories ended with about nearly sixty percent of respondents saying that that should be preferred at all three levels.
Madam Chair. Normally, these are listed as at least five years of teaching experience. So it could be elementary, middle, or high school. I think we need at least five years' teaching experience.
Dr. Cutray, what's the qualifications for, in licensing, a principal in the state of Virginia?
Administration and supervision.
I know, but isn't there a minimum teaching requirement?
Five years.
Okay. So Madam Chair, I would say with all three of these, it wouldn't matter, they have to have the five years before they could be a principal. We're requiring that they be a principal, so I would say it wouldn't matter
They could just leave.
which one of the areas, but they have to have five years' teaching experience.
Okay. I'm looking at some of the other advertisements, and they, most of them list experience as a principal, or here's one, experience as a classroom teacher or principal or director. Experience, principal. I think I'm comfortable leaving it with principal, assuming that is implied that you've had teaching experience. Ms. Hawk?
Yes, we certainly need required teaching experience. I don't know that there needs to be a minimum that's taken in terms of the state.
Yes, Zerzki, can we ask you a question? What was that? As just principal? We're asking if it makes sense to add that in addition, if we're saying that being a principal is required. Sorry, what, to add it is two different things, or, okay, so at least five, okay. Thoughts? Okay, so we'll add a minimum. A minimum of five years' teaching experience. Want to add a?
K through twelve.
K through twelve?
Yes.
K through twelve teaching experience?
Yes.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, but isn't really my other moot point, if we're requiring they be a principal, they've gone automatically got the five years' teaching experience?
Agreed.
So it won't hurt to add it?
Yeah, it won't hurt to add it. I'm deferring to our hiring expert in the audience.
And Ms. Hawk has a point, maybe coming from another state, because I do think in other states, it's only three years or something. So that's, you're right, I just thought about that.
Okay.
If they come from another state.
Okay, so I'll add a minimum of five years of K through twelve teaching experience?
Yeah, good point.
Okay. All right, how about work experience in Virginia? Survey respondents did not, and thirty-one was pretty much split. About a third of all thought it was, third thought it was required, a third thought it preferred, and a third said it wasn't important.
Madam Chair. I don't think it's particularly important where the experience came from. So I would not worry, I just leave it off.
Leave it off, okay, so you're saying it's not important?
Right.
Other opinions?
I think we would be limiting our candidates if we require some, any specific state.
I agree. I think it would also reference to the last point change you just made. We already said we want to open it up to people from other states, and here we'd be eliminating some of that, so.
I agree. I'm just going through the data here, I agree with that.
No, no, you're fine.
Okay, all right, and then the last one is residency in the school division. So survey respondents, forty-two percent thought that should be required, thirty-eight percent thought it should be that it was preferred, and only nineteen percent said it wasn't important.
Madam Chair. I know there can be various reasons why a superintendent might not want to live in the division. I don't know that we should require that per se, but perhaps we would say live within twenty miles of the school board office, because, you know, we want them to be relatively close by to meet as necessary. But for instance, they may have a child who doesn't want their dad to be superintendent, rather live somewhere else in another district, which would be slightly permissible, as far as I'm concerned. So I would maybe just say a mile range from the school board office, as far as where they can live, giving some capability to live outside the district if they wish.
Okay. Other opinions?
Madam Chair. Again, if we get an excellent candidate from another state, I mean, obviously, I guess the question would be, almost changing this in some way, would you be willing to relocate? And that's a huge issue, but being a superintendent is a huge job, because I would like to see somebody, when they are serving as a superintendent, to be living either in or very close to our division. So the answer to that is absolutely. However, you may have somebody who's very willing to move to this area. And so I would hate to say making required, or even, I guess you could say preferred, but I almost like to put not important, although it's an in-between there, because the question I will ask of anyone, if they don't live in this area, would you be willing to move? Does that make sense?
It does, although I think we should list it in our qualifications, so that if it, I mean, applicants are going to be, are going to apply and go through an initial screening based on the qualifications that we identify. And if it, I feel if we had two equally, you know, acceptable candidates, but one, I would go with the one that would relocate to this area, right? And live in the county. So I lean towards required, I could be talking to preferred.
Say that again.
I think I would, I think I'd prefer required, but I think preferred would be, should be the minimum.
I think preferred gives us the leeway to
Make an exception.
make exceptions to the rule, which we need to do.
Understood. Okay. Preferred?
Well, I think they need to be relatively close, they don't have to be in the county. So just to capture that, I would say, let's say, they have to live within twenty miles of the school board office, instead of like a mileage. So it lets them get outside the county if they really need to, but they're still not real far away. Can we set like a mileage from the school board office? A distance?
I don't think we can set that kind of a parameter because of the rural nature of the county. There's not housing necessarily available within a twenty-mile range.
I take that, that lets you get to Stafford, Fredericksburg, I think, also Caroline County, and miss get to all the neighboring counties, doesn't it?
But what parts of those counties, I think, is the point, right?
The near parts is the point, either the county or live nearby.
No, but you like.
I mean, you can go through the distance, but, I mean, is that general idea agreeable? That they either need to live in the county or not too far outside of it?
But Ms. Rolls, if we say preferred, I mean, that allows us the leeway to maybe make that decision if somebody is near enough. I hear what you're saying, and I absolutely think they should live either in or very close to it. But I would agree, if they lived in Colonial Beach or something, I mean, that's just maybe fifteen minutes away. But I think by putting preferred, we would allow that. But then again, that would be during the interview process, we'd find out how close are they? And compare that to other candidates. And if they were thirty miles away, that would be a detriment, I think.
How about strongly preferred?
Or just simply be willing to relocate to King George County.
Exactly right.
Well, but so willing to relocate, relocate to King George County is that you must be a resident of the division. Right, so that, that would be correct. Right, so that seems to be, that's, that makes it a requirement, like that it's required, residency in the school division is required versus being preferred, which would grant us a little bit more leeway. So there's a distinction there.
Well, I would stay with preferred.
Ms. Hawk? Ms. Rolls?
Stay with preferred.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of nuance here, so it seems like we're kind of talking about whether this applies at the time of the interview. I think, what I'm saying, maybe you all are too, that I don't care where they live now, like, live in California.
Oh, yes.
It's once they get the job, they have to.
Oh, yeah, 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 good distinction. So, agreed, I agree with that. I assume it was, we're all on the same page?
Yep.
Right, they can come from wherever, but they need, okay, so let's, how do we want to word that? Well, so one of these in here had a good statement that said upon selection.
What if we made it a little bit vague, like, most people only live in the county or or nearby the county?
So this is like.
I won't say the exact number, but.
Right, so here's an example, the candidate selected for the position must agree to become a resident of Newport News after accepting the position. We could say the candidate selected for the position, we strongly prefer that the candidate selected for the position becomes a resident of King George County. So we're strongly preferring it, but it wouldn't make it a hard requirement.
Yeah, I like that. I like that change.
I concur, Madam Chair.
Okay. Candidate selected for the position, no, it is strongly, it is strongly that the candidate selected for the position agrees to relocate to King County after accepting the position. Sound good?
Good.
Okay. All right. So I think that was the easy part. Okay, so if you scroll. Let's see, okay, so the next sections are the ones that are underlined in these example advertisements. So if we want to just start with leadership and management skills, rank your top three, so the top three were, oh, I didn't highlight these, let's see, risk taker, team player, and writing and speaking ability.
I'll agree, this is a little bit hard to read, can I, can you mind explaining?
How I.
You're saying you think the risk taker is the top one?
So the weighted average, so I spent some time calculating this last night to avoid having to ask the SBA what the numbers meant. So if you look at, like, so the way they did it, right, one, two, three, if you, the total was one seventy-eight, so if you divide.
The total was what?
The average, okay, so are you looking like on page nine, for example? We'll just look at the first one, writing and speaking ability, right? So there's one, two, three, total, and then there's a weighted average.
Right.
So the weighted average, the one point nine eight, says that, like, if you say, if one is, oh, just, yeah, nevermind, not required. If you average that number, you get one point nine eight, so if one is your first choice.
Be clear.
The numbers, right? So writing and speaking ability, fifty-eight percent, fifty-eight people ranked that their first choice, sixty-six people ranked it their second choice, fifty-four people ranked it their third choice. If you average that, the weighted average for that is one point nine eight, meaning that one point nine eight, it got a total ranking of one point nine eight. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
So of this, of these, this section, it's like one, two, three. So you look at the numbers, one being the best, three being the worst. So one point seven four is the best, one point nine six is the second best, one point nine eight is the third best.
Madam Chair, I would disagree with that math. I mean, you're right, that's the weighted of those three. So if one person voted for it being number one, one person voted for it being number two, one person voted for it being number three, the weighted average would be two. But that doesn't mean that's the most popular one, only three people voted for it in that case. So mostly, these numbers are mostly useless, except for the total column, that's really the only one that we care about. And it took a while to figure that out last night, I agree, it's kind of confusing. But, so you can see that for decisive leader, three hundred and twenty-nine people put that in their top three, it was either one, two, or three. So that's like overwhelmingly the number one area that people voted for.
I agree, what did I say was the number one one?
You said risk taker?
I was looking at the one below it, I agree with you, I meant this, I said one point seven four, I read the wrong category, I agree, decisive leader. And then I think it relates, right? So then the next one is three hundred and two, which is the total, which is also one point nine six, which is also the second one, right?
Right.
And then, and then one point nine eight is one. Well, I guess if you did it that way, then two hundred and forty-three people. said visionary creative thinker.
Right, those are the top three.
Okay. So do we, so we don't have to just list just those, right?
Right, but I don't disagree with those personally.
Okay, I don't either. Okay, so it's very similar. So we would say that the first one, our first three, the three qualities that we would say are important to us are that they are a decisive leader, that they're a team player, comfortable with shared decision-making, and a visionary creative thinker. Everyone agree with that?
Yeah, that's exactly what I put in my survey.
Okay. So let's see here. So this is what, this is the leadership management skills. So we said what, so decisive leader.
The question would be, how do you determine a decisive leader?
Someone who can make a decision and follow through with it. I'll be, I'll have to evaluate that.
Mr. Bush, it's pretty much impossible to hear you down here. Can you repeat that, please?
You wanted to
How do you determine what a decisive leader is?
Yeah, most of this is pretty fuzzy, right?
It what?
I guess we'll ask, ask the person if they're decisive, and if they decisively say that they are, then
Well, you ask them for some examples, right? We'll have to, we'll have to get creative in our question. Okay, so decisive leader, team player, comfortable with shared decision-making, and visionary creative thinker. Visionary creative thinker. Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, if you would want to also include that last phrase on page 33, under leadership and management, a creative thinker, decisive leader, and shows a history of database decision-making. So he or she makes decisions based on data.
Any comments or want to add that?
Ms. Cutright, say that again. You wanted to add decisive decision-maker based on data? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it's on page 33, the example, leadership and management skills creates a team atmosphere, comfortable, is comfortable with the shared decision-making, is a visionary motivator, creative thinker, decisive leader, and shows a history of database decision-making. Survey ranking of that one was, I mean, I'm, I'm lost here now.
I don't know if that, uh, analytical relies on data, that was much further down on
Right, yes.
Yeah, so our survey didn't necessarily indicate that that was
Right.
a high area of interest.
I'm just giving an example of a decision-maker. So if we wouldn't fit that in that section, that was all I was suggesting. I don't think, I don't think that's a a point that our community has responded to, so. Point taken.
I could go either way, yeah. Any other thoughts?
So to be clear, are we just putting those top three in there, or what was the suggestion right now?
So you know what, I would, um, so if I could offer a suggestion, I think we could just start with the top three. I mean, if we add too much, it becomes right, you'll have like, we'll have pages of words. We could do the top three, and then I don't know if anyone had any, like, if, like, you know, there were, you know, I don't know how many hundreds of lines of comments that were put in here, but we could always, if there was anything that really stuck with anyone, things that we want to talk about, we can always go back and add to categories after we're done. Um, might be a decent way to handle it. So there might be some trends or things that pop out that we think, oh, hey, that would be something good to add back into the leadership and management skills section.
Yeah, I understand what Dr. Cutright is saying, Cutright, I'm sorry. But, um, you know, data can be manipulated in so many ways, as we know from bean counters and everything else. Um, I agree with that, depending on how he is looking at the data, which is something that we might be involved with. So I'd kind of hesitate to put that because data can be manipulated.
I think that's really a skill
Yes.
Uh, that could be demonstrated if the person wanted to do so.
Be a tool, a mechanism to be a decisive leader.
Yeah.
I do prefer just picking the top three for now and moving away, it becomes like this Mary Poppins qualification, perfect in every way.
I agree, I agree. Okay, personal characteristics. So page 12. Um, okay, so the best, the highest ranked one was a good listener and accessible, followed by consistent, followed by caring. Did I do that properly? Okay, so what did I say? Uh, good listener and accessible. Wait, which one is this? Personal characteristics? Hold on a second. Personal characteristics. Good listener and accessible. Patient?
The third is caring, right?
Caring, caring, consistent and caring, correct. Right. Easy. Okay. The board superintendent relation. Page 15. Effectively mediates and accommodates different perspectives, provides option and recommendations to the board before accepting board directives, and can lead the board in goal-setting and planning. Oh, yes, that right? That one's really close with willing to assume a lead role in decision-making. You feel about listing all four of those? The difference of one, one in response.
There's definitely.
What's that, Mr. Rolls?
Yeah, this one does get a little difficult. It kind of calls into question the proper roles of board and superintendent. I'm not quite as comfortable with the one with 296 total votes. I'd prefer the one with 297. If we're choosing between the two.
Okay, so statistically speaking, I mean, it's one and 200, almost nearly 300 responses, I would say they're very they're essentially the same.
I'm not choosing because of one more vote, because of my personal preference. I'm just identifying by the number of votes rather than reading the whole thing.
I know, I'm going by the votes too. I'm saying the votes are so close, I think it would be prudent to include both of them.
Just do both.
So the second one and the fourth one, can lead the board in goal-setting and planning, and then willing to assume a lead role in decision-making while keeping the board informed. They got essentially the same number.
Right, right, right.
I'm not necessarily comfortable with saying that the superintendent's going to assume a lead role in decision-making while just keeping us informed. I think it's more with the policy and then the superintendent carries it out. I don't really prefer that wording.
I, I think, don't think we want to limit the role. We're looking for characteristics that are outstanding. So if if we add both of those in, those, those are still characteristics that, that can be presented, but one could be highlighted, agreed.
And I think the one that says willing to assume a lead role, the fact that it says willing to assume a lead role, I think that could be interpreted, right, it's up to us, right, we could interpret that as not saying that, like, you know, they're bulldozing the board if that's a fear or something, but that they're willing to assume a lead role so that if there is a need, you know, there are, there are, there are, yeah, I think instances, right, where it will be important for them to assume a lead role in our decision-making process. And I think to be able to do that is, I'm sorry, important, not, um, to always you know, to be unwilling to do that, I don't think would be a quality we would want.
So, so where are you putting willing to assume a lead role, second?
It'd be, it'd be last. So the first one, I would write it as effectively, the first, the highest one was effectively mediates and accommodates different perspectives.
Right.
So let me, um, effectively, let me type that out here. Effectively mediates and accommodates different perspectives. The second one is provides options and recommendations to the board. Provides options and recommendations to the board before accepting board directives. And then, and then it would say can lead the board in goal-setting and planning, and willing to assume a lead role in decision-making while keeping the board informed.
Yes, I agree with those three.
Okay, can lead the board.
I'm really uncomfortable with that one. Maybe Mr. Rolls was saying the same thing, willing to assume a lead role in decision-making, although I like that, but it makes me a little concerned in terms of, does he assume that lead role? Says he'll keep us informed, but if he's going to lead at something, I want more than just keeping us informed after he's already made the decision.
Right.
I think it, yeah. I guess I think it depends on the area.
Yeah.
There's some, there's, you know.
That's after the three, so it's fine.
Okay. Um, planning, willing.
Madam Chair.
Uh, go ahead.
I'll just say it for the last time, and I guess we'll get consensus go forward, but I would prefer just leave the fourth one off. I think that first three communicate plenty about what, what our desires are.
Okay, I would prefer to keep the fourth one. Others?
You wanted to keep the fourth one?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
In there, correct.
Which was the?
The willing to assume a lead role in decision-making.
I, I don't like that.
Ms. Hawk?
I think that's poorly worded.
We can change it.
Turn to my car.
Thank you. Uh, I think that's poorly worded. In, uh, willing to assume a lead is it is, um, an, an internal thing. It's, it's not a, it, it's, it's not a skill. So I, I would eliminate that.
I agree.
Okay, Dr. Cutright?
If you're talking about the board, I would say something like considers initiatives and recommendations of the board. Maybe this successful candidate provides multiple options and recommendations to the board.
We already, that's the second one.
Say the last part again, we are, yeah, provides options and recommendations to the board, that's, we're including that.
Yeah.
The question is whether or not to keep or reword or not include the willing to assume a lead role in decision-making while keeping the board informed.
I think we just covered it with what we just said previously.
Which was what?
Um, considers recommendations of the board.
That's different from willing to assume a lead role in decision-making.
I think they're basically one and the same.
I'm sorry, Dr. Cutright, I'm having a hard time hearing. Could you say it again? I'm sorry.
I said considers, the superintendent considers initiatives and recommendations of the board.
That's not assuming a lead role, that's just providing options and recommendations. I think the distinction is that it's, should be important that they're willing to assume a lead role when necessary, willing to lead when necessary.
So what do you mean by lead role?
We So for example, the development of the budget process, right? Like, we need the superintendent to be willing to assume a lead role in decision-making, right?
Well, let's just say that.
What?
Assume a role when the decision-making necessary.
Like, I would, I would even think, like, willing to lead when necessary.
Well, again, the superintendent is our only employee. So I would like to see that it's almost wording it differently. I guess I agree with Ms. Hock, is that I want him to take a lead role once we have directed him to do so, if that makes sense. I just don't like this idea of he's going to take a lead role and then he's going to let us know afterwards.
Well, so I think it's
You see my point, I guess. I'm thinking about some things that's actually occurred in the last couple of years, even here at this division.
So I think it depends on what the decision-making process is, right? Like, so for example, weather-related things, willing to assume, assume a lead role in decision-making while keeping the board informed. I don't think we need to be engaged with every single decision at all times, but we do need someone who is willing to assume a lead role when necessary.
Yes, I've been there for the 3:00 AM calls, I don't want them anymore.
I agree.
So I don't, I think just something that's willing to, it's not saying that we're going to you know,
So, Madam Chair.
defer all, you know.
So we spent a lot of time talking about this, and I think those first three that are in there, are those not adequate? Can we just agree on those and move on?
I think I agree.
I agree.
Okay. All right, the next one is staff relations. Okay, the first one, was that Ms. Rolls?
I was just going to ask, this is one I didn't have time to go look at before, but I'd be curious to compare this one that includes everyone to the one that was filled out just by staff. Did anybody happen to do that?
Yep. I review, yes. So staff, just the staff one, no, that's student.
I guess the staff, there's actually, what, like two or three different staff ones?
Well, there was, there was admin, there was admin, there were teachers and employees.
I said, if you look at, I guess maybe just look at this one first and then.
That's a good point. So let's see, what number is this one? What did I say? Um, six staff relations. So six, so staff relations creates an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect, maintains open channels of communication, supports staff development activities.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, what are you reading from right now?
I'm reading, I'm reading the one from the teachers.
Okay, that's consistent with the overall too, so.
Okay, and then like admin says admin says maintains open channels of communication, creates an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect, and supports staff development activities. So they seem pretty consistent. Right? Is that what we're saying?
Right, it looks like the third one would be such a good example for staff members.
What was that again?
I think the third one would be such a good example for staff members.
Is that more important than supports staff development activities?
I'm sorry, I'm struggling to hear you.
So we said main, so our top three would be maintains open channels of communications to and from staff, creates an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect, and the third one would be supports staff development activities and encourages professional growth.
You're right, I missed that one.
Okay, does that work?
Yes. Yeah, I liked it.
Okay, let me write these down. Maintains open channels of communication to and from staff, creates an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect, atmosphere of trust and mutual respect, and supports staff development activities, uh, development activities, and encourages professional growth. Good? Community relations. Effectively advocates school issues and needs, communicates effectively on both private and public levels, responds to individual concerns in appropriate manner. Any objections?
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Would you say that again?
Okay, so effectively advocates school issues and needs, communicates effectively on both private and public levels. Okay, so effectively advocates school issues and needs, communicates effectively on both private and public levels, and responds to individual concerns in an appropriate manner. Any objections?
No, that's fine.
Effectively advocates for school issues and needs, communicates effectively on both private public levels, responds to individual concerns, individual concerns in an appropriate manner. Okay?
Yes.
Right? School finance.
I mean, the top two are pretty easy, but after that, they're all about the same.
Lobbies, yeah, lobbies for school funding on behalf of the school division, develops and explains rationale for budget to the board and local officials. Yeah, and then what? Offers creative funding solutions, closely supervises budget development procedures, or identifies programs for increased funding. I think, I think the top three, I would go with the way it is presented, the offers creative funding solutions being the third one.
I could see why those
Are they close?
Four of these are close.
Yeah.
Because it just depends on so many factors of that particular year.
Yep.
So, I'd make a kind of proposal here, I would actually drop the top one and then just go with the next three. Uh, just, this top one being lobbying for school funding. Uh, so obviously, this survey was completed mostly by parents and staff, so people who have a, uh, interest in spending more on, on the school of the division, whereas this wasn't taken by the entire county. So I think if we had all taxpayers doing this survey, for instance, the results would probably be quite different. So I think it's better to focus on getting the best value for the money, which is what the other ones focus on versus just getting more money.
Oh, I don't think that the, so why, why does develops and explains rationale for budget to the board and local officials? You're saying that's the one you would skip?
No, I, I'll keep that one, I would not do the very bottom one.
Oh, the lobby for school funding? No, I just, no, they need the lobby for school funding.
I agree with the top two that the community put, but I would put.
Yeah, the third one.
The third one, I'd put is closely supervises the budget. That would just be me. Now, I know that didn't make their number three cut, but they're also close.
Budget to the board.
But I like the idea that he's going to closely supervise budget developments. Active, that says he's going to be active in every part of it.
Right, so I think that first one is more the role. So we, we are advocating for what we need, but explain the rationale, not necessarily lobbying for just more funds.
Well, so I think as we've seen, the schools often don't quite get enough funding, so I think it's important to advocate for more. But so.
I would agree, I think it's implied in the first one with the develops and explains rationale for budget.
I agree. Dr. Cartwright, what are your thoughts?
I think the example on page thirty-three sums it up well.
Thirty-three.
A school finance. And I think it covers all three areas, which says demonstrates a strong understanding of local operational capital funding needs, advocates for school funding on behalf of the division at the local and state levels, develops the budget and explains its rationale for the board and local officials, and offers creative funding solution. And it's, and it says, Virginia school divisions do not have taxing authority.
I agree, I think that's a, I, I like that synopsis.
I'm, I'm not sure I want the idea of creative funding.
Funding solutions.
That
Implying that.
That's perhaps open-ended in the wrong direction.
What do you think of the, the one that Dr. Cartwright read and remove the offers creative funding solution?
Yes, I like that, that's the, uh.
So we just add a, a sentence in the beginning and then comment on the Virginia not having taxing authority, because that is the distinction.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So what are the final three?
We're gonna, we're gonna just read the school finance section off of page thirty-three. It, it's adding one line and then taking our one, our first and second.
That's fine.
Okay, so it'll say, just what's there minus offers creative funding solutions, demonstrates a strong understanding of local operational and capital.
Madam Chair.
Uh-huh.
Did you say you're adding something to that?
No, I, I'm, I'm copying it right out of the book.
Okay, just removing the creative.
Just removing offers, correct. Advocates for school funding. For school, advocates for school funding on behalf of the school division at the local and state levels. At the local state levels. Develops the budget, develops budget and explains its rationale to the board and local officials. And then will include Virginia school divisions do not have taxing authority. Excellent, again, all right. Areas of expertise. A lot of them there, let's see. So let's see, um, curriculum and instruction. Budget and finance. School reform. Strategic planning, total quality management. I don't really like the wording of that. Do we agree with curriculum and budget and finance being the top two, for starters?
I definitely agree with the curriculum as the number one.
Curriculum.
Yeah.
And instruction.
Instruction, yes, I'm sorry, curriculum and instruction is number one, yes.
Okay, um, followed by budget and finance?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, budget and finance. What are we listening to over there? I like it.
Who's music?
Okay, so then the third one is, says school reform, for example, strategic planning, top quality management, et cetera. Other thoughts on that?
I don't think school reform captures that description.
I agree.
I think school reform is, is an unfortunate wording.
I agree. So, how about, I mean, strategic planning, that's important, and we just developed a strategic, strategic plan and implementing it and that and so on and so forth is an area of focus.
Cross out the word school reform and put the parentheses words.
Yes.
Okay, do we want top qual- total quality management or just strategic planning?
Probably just strategic planning.
I like just strategic planning. Do you want strategic planning and total quality management, the other example, or just strategic planning?
Total quality management is an old buzzword from some time ago.
Okay, so how about with just strategic planning? So our areas of expertise would be curriculum and instruction, budget and finance, and strategic planning. Good?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Sorry. Trying to find budget and finance in this list. Is that the first one, or, oh, there it is. That works.
All right, so that, um, so that's still, that's it for the, the ranked questions. Then there are the comments. So I think this is an opportunity to embellish upon any of the ones that we just discussed. If there are particular trends.
Madam Chair, I pulled a few of the comments.
Okay.
Uh, one I had works with diverse groups. I don't know if that fits any of the categories.
Hmm?
Um, committed to staff retention, with the teachers' comments.
Yep.
Uh, works with all ward, all wards and church groups to bring all in the mix, which would be diversity. Um, teachers want someone that works hard and they need someone who's willing to work with them, meeting all the students equally, teacher morale and retention.
So we could add, um, just like maybe staff relations, supports staff development activities, encourages professional growth, and we could add something about teacher retention. I would agree that that's very important.
I think that's the biggest one, is the staff retention.
Um, so let's see, two percent. Support staff development activity encourages professional, uh, supports staff development activities encourages professional growth with a focus on staff retention.
Being able to advocate for their staff, um, I think is an important piece, although I, I don't know how many times that was repeated.
Advocating for staff. You could, we could say av- um, advocates for staff development?
No.
No, app, no, 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 you're right, no, that's different. Um, I know what you mean, advocates for staff, um.
I think it's more in the caring concern for staff communication.
Like, well, we could add a different category. I'm trying to figure out where to, where to feed it into the categories that we've already got listed. Um, we could just, we could add a, um, add a different category or add like a free, like a less structured, you know, just about I'm gonna make a note and then let's think about where to put it in. Okay, so, so staff retention, okay, what else? Are there other comments?
I saw ones.
I'm sorry.
Respect and love for the community.
What was that?
One was respect and love for the community, which is a little bit tough for somebody coming outside the community. So, I mean, wording that might be a challenge, just that they're comfortable in a rural community, serving a rural community.
Yeah, that's a good point, um.
Madam Chair, could you repeat what you just said?
The format.
The format.
Yeah, we didn't hear you.
Oh, before ma-, oh, I just said, I wasn't sure where to wrap the staff retention into the, like, so I wrote up, I've written it up the way it is here in the book. And so I wasn't sure where to add staff retention, so I thought, thought is we could, I can make a list of the additional points that we wanted to incorporate, and perhaps there will be a tidy way to tie them together when we get through that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Madam Chair, perhaps it goes under nine areas of expertise. That's just a suggestion.
Yeah, that's a good, yep, mm-hmm, that could be a good fit. Okay, but, um, so, but, so Mr. Rolls commented on
Right, so essentially it can feel comfortable at home in a rural community.
In a rural community, agreed, I think that's a, I think that's a good point. They comfortable, we are comfort, comfortable in a rural community. I'll have it, I'll leave it at that and we can revisit. I thought there were a number of comments on uh, being willing to think outside the box. I guess part of that goes into, and we have, one of our thing was being a visionary creative thinker. I guess that's kind of.
Did you say thinking outside the box? I couldn't quite hear you.
Okay, yes, like thinking outside the box, like getting away from the, oh, it's the way it's always been done in King George. There were a number of comments to that effect. Like this, must know slash understand the community. King George is unique and the new superintendent must understand the dynamics. However, understanding that dynamics of KG does not mean that the new superintendent should conform to previous precedents, but rather use that understanding to help guide King George to grow.
I, I especially like, um, the definition of tact as the ability to tell someone to go to hell in such a way that they look forward to the trip.
I like that too.
Attributed to Winston Churchill, of course.
I like that too.
I, I don't think that's necessary, but it's perhaps a nice to have.
Tact, that's true. Um, that could be a personal characteristic. Good listener, accessible, consistent, caring, tactful.
Communication is, uh, and at one point I had gone through and tried to rate these in areas, and communication has been the most frequently stated, uh, the, of these that I've looked at.
I would agree. So you want to emphasize that somewhere else? So so we talked about, so communication was commented on with regards to staff relations, maintains open channels of communication to and from staff, and also in community relations, communicates effectively on both private and public levels. Do we want to emphasize that in some other way, or is that adequate?
Could you read that one more time, Madam Chair?
What was that?
Could you just repeat that one more time, please?
So, so we, we commented on communication in this, in, under staff relations, we say maintains open channels of communication to and from staff, and then we also say under community relations, communicates effectively on both private levels. I'm thinking maybe we, um, something that would be, would be like community applications out to the community and staff and parents. Like, I think we had a good focus on that this year, right? And so that maybe is different than the communication that we've, um, captured here. So maybe, um.
Here's a comment, communication to community and stakeholders.
Yeah, um, like communicates effectively and regularly with community and, what'd you say?
Stakeholders.
Thoughts? We could add that to community relations, how's that sound? Effectively advocates for school issues and needs, communicates effectively on both private and public levels, responds to in, individual concerns of every manner, and maybe just say communicates effectively and regularly on, well, commu- communicates regularly on private levels, that's kind of weird, communicates effectively and regularly to I don't think the order of which this makes the most sense. Okay, how about this? Community relations. Communicates effectively and regularly with community and various stakeholders and effectively advocates for school issues and needs. Then, the next sentence will say communicates effectively on both private and public levels and responds to individual concerns in an appropriate manner. How's that?
Sounds good.
That's good.
Good. All right. What else?
Funny, how many people mentioned something about staffing and retention?
Teacher comments.
We haven't said anything about security anywhere in here, have we?
No.
No. Teacher retention, more money. Classroom size. Retention of qualified staff. Yeah.
Yeah.
I know we can ask individual questions when it comes time to actually doing the interview, but I'd sure like to know what his background or understanding in, in school security and safety, considering the world we live in today. I don't even know how to word that.
I think that's a good just interview topic.
We're at the right.
Versus like a, like a qualification.
Although I'd like to see somebody who's had some experience in developing a management plan, that sort of thing.
I agree, Mr. Bush, that, um, it is more of a priority these days and not all people are exposed to the, uh, to what's effective and, and what's current and, and what's, I, I guess being able to look at your community and, and see what resources you already have and then bring in what you don't have. So I do think security, development of a security comprehensive plan. Help me out here.
Experience in developing a crisis management plan, developing or maintaining a crisis management plan.
Experience in developing and maintaining a crisis management plan.
I think that that would be essential.
And we're effectively putting it down as preferred qualification, not like a requirement, right? That's how we're wording that.
We could put that in areas of expertise.
Yeah.
I like that.
So we would say curriculum and instruction, budget and finance, strategic planning. Repeated again, development of
Development.
And management.
And maintaining a crisis management plan. He's experienced in developing and maintaining a comprehensive crisis management plan.
Of comprehensive.
Crisis management plan.
So curriculum and instruction, budget and finance, strategic planning, development and maintenance of a comprehensive crisis management plan. All right. Anything else?
Is there anything in all these comments that, um, I know I'm reading through them now. I looked at them very briefly before, but that maybe we see over and over that we haven't covered. Do you see what I'm saying? In other words, was there something that was mentioned by a lot of different people?
Communication.
Yes.
Communication, yes.
Staff retention.
I know. Is there something else we're missing here?
Um.
Advocacy.
Yep, advocacy. Something like transparency. We can only see the word transparency one, but there.
As a concept.
So it was mentioned in here and then there are some that just say like, I just saw one. It was like being truthful, right?
Right. And genuinely, and I think that comes into perhaps the caring and empathetic, um, skills.
About what if, so, so under personal characteristics, we have good listener, accessible, consistent, caring, tactful, transparent.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I think at this point we've covered the major things. I don't know how much more we can really add by more words. It's really a good one on the interview, I think, as you said earlier.
I agree. Do you want to include transparent or not?
Well, just as I was going to say no, here it pops up. Um, but I, I don't, I don't see it as a consistent theme, uh, but if we have adequate communication, transparency is a piece of that.
A result of it.
Yes, yes, a result, yes.
I'd agree, I'd agree. Okay. Um, okay. So the latter two, so we commented on staff retention and comfort in a rural community. So let's think of how to tie those in here. So.
You talk, we have to develop that into some sort of qualification. We can ask the question, but what would be the qualification?
Say what again?
We're writing qualifications here, so those are great questions, but how would we develop that into a qualification?
That's what I'm saying. Like, we need to do that. So those were two comments from pulled out, two sentiments pulled out of the, all the comments that we read. So I just, I wrote them down. I hadn't tied them into what we'd already written up. So I was just saying, so, so those are the two things we need to figure out how we want to address. Um, so so staff retention could be added to leadership and management skills or staff relations or areas of expertise.
Experience developing, um, quality staff recruiting and retention policies and procedures. I just said a bunch of words.
Um.
I mean, I'd like to see somebody come in that actually has, um, had positive experience in developing a good, um, retention and recruiting plan in his last school experience.
So maybe though they were, I agree with you. We could just say staff retention as area of expertise. Yeah. And then that could come in different forms, right? You could have been a superintendent and you like implemented all these great new hiring ideas, or you could have been a principal and had the best staff retention in your division because you were a great principal, right? So.
Well, let me give you an example of kind of what I'm talking about. If we were interviewing a potential superintendent and we asked some question about retention or recruiting and they said, well, I make it a point to go to some of the top universities in the area at least once a year and talk to the, um, education department to look at the top teachers. Uh, you know, I'm just, wow, that's a, that's a cool thing. And that's not, superintendents don't usually do that. That's just an example. But at least that is an idea or a procedure that, that he used for, um, positive recruiting.
So we talked, agreed, but we talked about staff retention, which is different.
Yes, that is.
So. I mean, if we want to, we could add recruiting.
Well, the retention piece to me would be in a form of a question. I can't think of it as a qualification, but it would be something like, um, what are your successes and failures in teacher retention in your past school experience?
I agree, I agree. What if we add, so areas of expertise, right? So how can, you, you could, I think we could say, you could make that same point about how is it a, I forget the word to use, how is it a qualification or something or other? Um, you can say the same for curriculum and instruction, right? Any of those. So I think you could be, I think it would be a decent fit to add to our areas of expertise, recruiting and staff retention.
That's fine.
How's that?
Yes.
And then we'll just ask questions related to that. That's good. And that does meet a lot of the comments that people made.
Yep, yes. And then, okay, and then the last one was comfort in a rural community. Which I think is important. So we're in community, maybe in community relations, that probably makes sense. So what's the say comfort in a rural community or comfort, leading in a rural community, comfort? Help me out. What do we want to say about that?
Just comfortable being in a part of a rural community.
The comfort.
And at home in a rural community.
Comfortable. Leading and living in a rural community? Other thoughts? Ms. Hawk, Ms. Bush?
I'm still debating about, um, what, what role that would play in, um, in, in the search. I mean, are we saying you're only available, if you have been in a rural community, that's your primary qualification, or that's one of your primary qualifications? I, and I don't think that's valid. I mean, I think people can understand a system, whether it's an urban, rural or suburban setting. I'm still toying with that.
There was a specific comment, Ms. Hawk, I'll try to find it for you, but I was trying to generalize it. But yeah, it just said respect and love for the community. So they want somebody to come in here and just, and love King George and really plug in, not never quite fit in.
So I think, um, so, so some feedback and comments we've got are not, not we as a word, but things I've heard about, about rural, about the difference of in rural communities, but from a, from a board perspective, like a local, like a local, um, like local elected officials, right? So like I have, I have heard that, you know, like in rural communities, there are, there is less, you have fewer people, for example, running to be on the school board or running to be on the board of supervisors, like you have fewer people engaged and stuff like that. You know, the challenges in a rural community, maybe you don't have the business base, right? Like we see that in our finances, um, like with our, you know, in the dynamics with our, um, you know, board of supervisors, part of that plays into that. Um.
Madam Chair, but I don't necessarily see that as a qualification. I see that as some questions we might ask.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Rolls, but I don't see that as a qualification because you might have somebody who's coming from a, a mid-sized city or something that has some fantastic ideas. And yet he doesn't have any experience in a rural community. But you're right, Mr. Rolls, and this is a very different community than, than Richmond or whatever. So I'm agreeing with you, but I think that could come out in questions.
That's fair.
Announcement is also helping them decide whether they want to apply or not for the position.
So that, agreed. And that will be captured in the demographics.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, if the superintendent is surprised when he gets here in the interview of the kind of community we are, then we don't need to even look at it.
Yeah, they didn't do that. They didn't do the advertisement, right? So like ours here, so ours says, King George owned approximately 27,000 citizens, da-da-da-da, 38,000 of them are agricultural. We're a part of the scenic northern neck. The county's home to one of the world research. Anyway, so porn is agricultural is listed in our, it doesn't say rural, right? But, um, it does allude to that. The county covers 113,000 acres, of which 72 acres are forested and 38,000 are agricultural. I mean, do the math, that's most of the county, right? King George is in the scenic northern neck of Virginia, is part of the Fredericksburg region and between the Washington and Richmond metropolitan areas. County's home to one of the premier research and development centers and a systemic government. So I think you could say that one could deduce from that paragraph that we were in fact a rural community and you'd hope that they read that. Thoughts?
You know, looking at all these comments from the various people that filled out the survey, it might be good for us before we actually get to the interview level that we sort of combine questions related, not necessarily to what we want to ask.
Yep.
But the categories that we might ask based on comments that people made.
Agreed, agreed. Okay. Well, if there aren't any, anyone that has any other burning, um, issues they want to address, you want me to read through what we have come up with?
Sure.
All right. I think we were pretty succinct. I found proud of us. I think we did a good job. Okay, so qualifications. An earned doctor is preferred. Experience as a superintendent, assistant superintendent, or central office administrator is preferred. Experience as a principal is required. A minimum of five years of K through 12 teaching experience is required. It is strongly preferred that the candidate selected for the position agrees to relocate to King George County after accepting the position. So those would be our little bulleted qualifications. And then moving into the categories, our first one is leadership and management skills. Decisive leader, team player, comfortable with shared decision-making, visionary, creative thinker. Personal characteristics, good listener, accessible, consistent, caring, tactful.
Madam Chair, just going back one, we had, was there decisive leader in there?
Yep, that was the first one. Leadership management skills, decisive leader.
Okay.
Just that. Yep. Okay. All right. Board and superintendent relations. Effectively mediates and accommodates different perspectives, provides options and recommendations to the board before accepting board directives, can lead the board in goal setting and planning. Staff relations. Maintains open channels of communication to and from staff, creates an atmosphere of trust and mutual respect, supports staff development activities and encourages professional growth. Not ask like a question. All right. Community relations. Communicates effectively and regularly with the community and various stakeholders and effectively advocates for school issues and needs. Communicates effectively on both private and public levels and responds to individual concerns in an appropriate manner. Right. School finance. Demonstrates a strong understanding of a local operational and capital funding needs. Advocates for school funding on behalf of the school division at local and state levels, develops the budget and explains its rationale to the board and local officials. Virginia school divisions do not have taxing authority. And then areas of expertise, curriculum and instruction, budget and finance, strategic planning, development and maintenance of a comprehensive crisis management plan, recruiting and staff retention. That's it? What do you think?
There, I did see one overall comment here. I don't know if there's a place to fit it in there or not, um, but what it reads is ability to foster a positive, inspiring environment such that the staff and students are generally excited to come to school each day, knowing that they're doing something meaningful.
A good comment.
I can't remember if there's always been there about creating a positive environment. Do we already have that or no?
We don't. We can add it.
Um, Mr. Rolls, would you repeat that?
It's number 202 on page 33. It reads, ability to foster a positive, inspiring environment such that staff and students are generally excited to come to school each day, knowing that they're doing something meaningful.
How about adding it to the end of our leadership and management skills? What if we said decisive leader, team player, comfortable, shared decision-making, visionary, creative thinker and um, and ability, I guess that doesn't quite fit with the, an ability to create a positive and to, to, an ability to create a positive environment.
And positive and inspiring environment.
Positive and inspiring environment.
Madam Chair, I would add for staff and students.
Okay. And, okay, how about, I'll say I'm possessive is the ability to create a positive, inspiring, inspiring environment for what was that? Staff and students?
Yes, staff and students.
Other thoughts? I like it. Ms. Hawk, you have any parting comments? Deep in thought?
I'm fine.
Okay. Well, so, so I just listed each of these categories just in, you know, like, they're not bulleted, they're written like paragraphs that look like this, but they're not necessarily sentences. We want to just leave them that way or do you want? Do you want to just leave them that way or do you want me to turn them into sentences that read more like, I don't know, something like the candidate possesses? Or you want to just leave them the way they are?
Madam Chair, what's, clarify the goal. Do we want, we're just trying to rough it out right now. Do you want to create something more polished after talking to the V S B A, 2% for a vote at the next meeting next week?
Say that again, I don't know what, like.
We're not trying to prove something right now, right? We're just getting the basic ideas down and then I think you say you want to talk to the V S B A.
Yeah.
See if they're taking this or if they have another rule on this.
Yep, I would assume, send this to them. I imagine we'll get like the version of it back, right, like what it looks like. Then we could review that and yes, I would assume.
And then perhaps go down a final version at next week's meeting?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay.
So I'm looking at our timeline. Yeah, I think that, let's see, because they, um, this had, this, I know this was a tentative timeline, but it said July 25th, provide established qualifications to V S B A and then wouldn't begin receiving applications for a month. So our timeline, we're about a week behind that. So there's a month between us getting this to them and then finalizing it, I suppose, and it being posted, right? So, yeah, so how about, yeah, we can do that. I'll send this to V S B A and tell them, I'm assuming, right, we'd like to get a copy of it back to review and, you know, formally approve and concur before posting. That work?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. All right. Well, hey, I'm impressed. I don't know how long this was going to take us, so.
Do you need a motion?
Or?
A move that we pursue the application process by submitting the preliminary version to V S B A.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did we have, did we have the words superintendent's qualifications initially?
Sure. Sure. You hear that, Ms. Ringo? We'll add superintendent's. Can you read, read the motion back to us, but include the superintendent's search? So pursue the superintendent's search.
Just add the word superintendent's search.
Application process. Yes, perfect. All right, so we have a second.
Version of qualifications.
Version of qualifications. All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn.
A move adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are now adjourned.
Come in.
Thank you.